All right. Mr. Guinan, would you like to report out of closed session?
I guess we've got to talk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Emeryville City Council and the Mason Board met in closed session. On the items listed on the closed session agenda, for all of the items under 5.1, an update was provided. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's adjourn at 5:45. It is 5:45. I now call to order the special meeting in the city of Emeryville. Do we need to call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Bowders.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Here.
And Mayor Medina.
Here. Approval of the final meeting agenda?
I so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Member Donahue, a second from Member Bowders.
Councilmember Bowders.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats.
Aye.
And Mayor Medina.
Aye. Any expedited communications to report? Done for me. All right. Public comment for consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Seeing none, let's move on to the Housing Committee's annual report on committee goals, principles, and accomplishments for 2018.
I'm going to get the PowerPoint set up. I'd like to introduce Vicky Josul, who has been on the Housing Committee for... How long has it been on the Housing Committee?
Eight years.
Eight years. Why am I struggling with this? Where is it, Charlie? Is it supposed to be here?
Don't press me, sir.
Ah, all right. So, when do you want to go to the next slide?
Okay. Vicky Josul. So, the Housing Committee Annual Report. Housing Committee's role, accomplishments, 2018, priorities, 2019. The Housing Committee provides input and recommendations regarding the city's policies and priorities, and feedback related to the city housing's policies and programs. Accomplishments, 2018. Recommended, the City Council approved the 2018 Housing Affordability Table for Sales, Prices, Rent, and Income Limits. Reviewed state housing legislation, and reviewed and approved 2018 Annual Calendar Year Report on Housing Element Progress. Accomplishments, 2018. Reviewed and approved fiscal year 2018 Annual Report on Housing Successor Activities. Reviewed homeless outreach strategy and recommended changes. Commented on smoking control issues. Reviewed and commented on proposal guidelines and regulations for below-market rate rental residential developments. Priorities, 2019. The Housing Committee's first priority is to fiscal development of the affordable housing by reviewing housing bond funding and program proposals. Specifically, the committee will review and provide comment on an expenditure plan for the housing bond. The second priority is related to the first priority, to facilitate development of additional affordable housing through providing comment on the developer solicitation and proposals for 4300 San Pablo Ave Affordable Housing Project, including the proposal to include integrated, intergenerational housing in the request for that qualification and proposals, the RFQ. Other priorities. Review and recommend the City Council approve changes to the first-time homebuyer and below-market rate homeownership program. Review and recommend the City Council approve the 2019 Housing Affordability Table for Sale Prices, Rent, and Income Limits. Okay. Review and approve the 2000 calendar... Review and approve the annual 2019 Calendar Year Report on Housing Successor Activities. Review housing bond funding program proposals. Draft a sort of income anti-discrimination ordinance. Outreach to tenants of affordable housing regarding their safety and parking needs, and research obstacles to the development of housing above-surface parking lots. So, the conclusion... Well, my conclusion is that we need... If we keep wanting to do more projects, we need more staff. Because we always think we're a little city, but we always want to do really big things. But the other conclusion I have is that I'm really proud to be a citizen in Emeryville that supports public housing.
Thank you. All right. Any public comment on this item? All right, let's... Any comments from up here? Go ahead.
I just want to... I started my public service in Emeryville as a member of the Housing Committee, and Vicky Josul was the very first person to greet me at that committee a number of years ago, and it's just great to see the committee continue its work, and I'm very excited to work as the liaison now to the committee from the council on the expenditure plan for Measure C in the next year, and coming up with how we're going to invest that money. And I want to take this moment to thank Catherine Furpo for all of her many years of service to the city of Emeryville. I realize this is your last council meeting with us. You'll be here on... Oh, they lied to me. They told me the first was your last day, but you're going to be here on the second? Okay, perfect. And so, I just wanted to take the moment anyway, since you're here, to thank you for all your work with the committee in helping make sure that our city is a leader in the Bay Area on housing issues.
Any other comments? Thank you for all your work, and also for going through that and reading a white font on a light blue background that entire time. I feel you. Thank you so much for everything you do. All right, next up, 6.2, BPAC. We got somebody.
Were you not expecting something?
There was some controversy.
Hi, I'm Tom Modick. I guess I'm the longest sitting member of the... We're just trying to figure it out. About 17 years on the BPAC. And seen it go from, I don't know, a bunch of arguments and nothing being done to, I don't know, seven to nothing votes, and developers cooperating with this, I think. Anyways, so this is our annual report on committee goals, principles, and accomplishments for 2018 and proposed for 2019. The goals and principles are to work with the City Council and city staff to improve access, infrastructure, and safety for people who ride a bike or walk in Emeryville.
Good question, Tom. Do we have a slideshow for you, or is there supposed to be a slideshow queued up for you?
No.
Nope? Okay. This is visual enough.
I don't know how to use PowerPoint. Well, I might learn it one of these years. So, what we've done for 2018, the summer Emeryville walking and biking tour, which was extremely enlightening, I thought, engaged the city's residents in walking and biking in Emeryville, and we got feedback on priorities and needs for pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure and safety. That was a tough place to get to. It was mostly Powell Street and a bunch of very busy streets that we walked and biked, so I thought this was very tough, and I thought it was very enlightening as to how to get around that area. Also, the improvements of the Powell-Christie corridor. We track the developments in improving this portion of the city infrastructure, and we have pretty much a standing agenda item every month that helps try to address that because it needs work constantly, I would think. We... On the summer repaving program, we reviewed the plans for the repaving and provided suggestions to the staff on the improvements for pedestrian and cyclist needs, and a lot of those were implemented. The SafeTrek Safety Evaluation of the six Emeryville intersections, which I believe are mostly Powell Street intersections and Frontage Road intersections, provided input to the SafeTrek team from UC Berkeley on identified intersections, and suggested the inclusion of Hollis and Powell two intersections to the study. The 40th Street Corridor redesign, we reviewed and designed options and recommended a protected two-way bicycle track on 40th Street all the way from Adeline Street to the IKEA. Not certain whether that's going to happen, but we recommended it. And Emeryville Vision Zero, which is basically zero fatalities or major injuries, made recommendations to Transportation Commission to implement Vision Zero for people on foot or on bike in Emeryville, in line with other cities' initiatives. So, our top priorities for calendar year 2019 are, once again, Emeryville Vision Zero, to work towards a plan where there are no fatalities or disabling injuries for bicyclists or pedestrians in the city. An approach for car-free or light, or car-light living, determining infrastructure and city programs needs to allow for city residents to choose to live car-free or car-light anywhere in the city. Car-free commuting to Emeryville. Determine infrastructure and city program needs to allow commuters to easily get to work to Emeryville without a car. We are going to reprise our Emeryville Summer Tour. I'm not certain whether it's just going to be walking or biking. It may be one or the other. Going to host a focused bike or pedestrian tour to engage residents and visitors to the city that don't currently participate on the BPAC committee and solicit feedback on their identified areas of concern. And as an aside, and in 2018, we had a lot of people come from Oakland and other groups and stuff like that, not just Emeryville people, and it was nice to listen to their input on that. 2019 Bike to Work Day, which I believe is in May. Engage residents and commuters in Emeryville with a goal of increasing the numbers of people riding bikes on Bike to Work Day. I think almost every year it's gone up. And neighboring cities outreach, we're going to collaborate with bicycle and pedestrian transportation committees in Berkeley and Oakland to increase a little bit of regional interconnectivity via active or public transportation. The San Pablo Corridor, a street I won't ride on.
Not yet.
Unless I have to.
Not yet.
Work with Berkeley and Oakland to create strong bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure on the San Pablo Corridor. We've actually had a presentation recently on that, and there are several choices that people are going to be working on. The Powell-Christie Corridor area plan. Going to be hopefully developing a pedestrian and bike plan to continue to track the bike and ped developments in this area. Work with staff on the issues of an all-red at Powell and Christie intersection, also known as a scramble, and the issue of no right turn on red arrows at I-80 off-ramp to increase safety for pedestrians and cyclists. And aside, I was there a week and a half ago in the early evening, and I saw at least six vehicles turn right on red there in front of me. Safety at key intersections in Emeryville. Evaluate the opportunities to expand city park or parklet spaces while improving pedestrian and bicycle safety at key intersections in Emeryville where dangerous car traffic has been observed. The first highlighted priority would be Emeryville's Vision Zero, and the second would be the neighborhood cities outreach. I forgot to talk to the mayor. Conclusion is our goal is to increase the quality of life for visitors, employees, and residents in the city of Emeryville. People walking and biking should be able to safely move around the city regardless of who they are, where they're from, their age, their ability, disability, race, sex, gender, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or immigration status. Had something I was going to add to that, but now I've forgotten after reading all of this. Any questions? Comments?
Well, there... Yeah, well, the public comment, then. Yeah. We'll open it for public comment? Okay, seeing none. John, go ahead.
Okay, Tom, stay at the microphone because there was no public comment. I just had a couple of questions. Do we... Do you have a statistic? We had no bike and pedestrian fatalities this last year, or did we have one... Was it in 2018 or '17 that we had one fatality in pedestrians?
2017.
Was that '17?
2017.
So, do we track... Does the committee track how many bicycle injuries that we get?
It's problematic. We have... At our meetings, we have a police officer scheduled just about every month, and they often get called away during the middle of the meeting. And we're trying to get, you know, the near misses and things like that categorized, but a lot of that is not dealt with. I would say that in all of these years of being on the bike committee, the single most, you know, glaring statistic has been when we were told the percentage of people that die in a bike-car accident at 10 miles an hour, 20 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, and 40 miles an hour. So, I'm kind of a build it and they will not come type of person. I think infrastructure and slower speeds will be the real solution. Narrower lanes, slower speeds, maybe roundabouts, diverters, whatever it takes.
Do you... So, I just have a couple other questions. Do you think that bicycle injuries that don't result in serious injuries or fatalities where a person is hospitalized, do you think those go unreported by bicyclists largely? Someone falls off a bike, the car turns into their lane, and they swerve to avoid, or they're hit by the corner of a bumper or something, and they come off a bike? Do you think bicyclists always report, mostly report, seldomly report if they're not seriously injured?
I don't have the slightest idea.
Okay.
What happens there. I would guess that it is seriously under-reported, especially, you know, people at night or people that might be a little bit drunk, things like that, you know?
Okay, and then my last two things are... And I know that the mayor is your council liaison, so you may know this already, but we will have a San Pablo Corridor community study. ACTC is coming to do a listening session on that. I just would like to amplify that with the networks you work with to make sure that people do come and speak out about what type of treatments they want on San Pablo. I can tell you from the representative position on the ACTC board, the cities of Oakland and Emeryville have different positions than Berkeley and Albany right now on what to do, and it might mean inconsistent treatment, so I just want to make sure folks come out to that.
Given us three options recently.
Yeah. So, I just... I would just like to lift that up, and then additionally, I'll be announcing at the general meeting tonight, a meeting with Caltrans about their proposal to deconstruct the maze and close it for a year, and divert everyone onto Emeryville's streets. And I... There's going to be a public hearing on April 10, and I really would love to have people in the community, especially bike and ped-friendly folks, come out to that and ask some tough questions of Caltrans. So, maybe I can have the mayor be in touch with you on that.
Yeah. Marcy's actually already emailed that out to BPAC. She's on top of it.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Tom, pleasure serving as liaison for BPAC. I agree with your assessment. It's a committee that's gotten increasingly effective at delivering recommendations. Your recommendations for 40th Street redesign, the cycle track, were adopted, as were many of your repainting recommendations, so I thank everyone for all their work. We have long meetings, but they are worthwhile. Any other comments? All right, next up. 6.3, Parks and Recreation Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments for 2018.
Hello, everybody. I would like to introduce Jack Gazzoni, who is the chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee. You go, Jack.
Okay, thanks. Hi, I'm Jack, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about what happened last year with Park and Rec, and what we would like to see next year. First of all, we had a liaison this year, Scott. Thank you very much. Your input has been helpful, even though it's only been a few months. We're looking forward to more. In 2018, Pelado Park was opened, adding to the Emeryville Greenway. And it's a nice outdoor area, not too far from some pretty busy intersections, so it's a pleasant, calm space in an area that can use that. And a remodeled and expanded Christie Park also reopened, and that's proven to be really popular. And the large whale play structure has shown how something can really transform a not-so-popular space into something that's used a lot, and we're looking into ideas on how to do that with other things. Yeah, I skipped over the bullet points there, but I'll cover those topics. But there's Pelado Park, and there is Christie Park. And anyway, in response to community input, we advocated for addition of lights at Temescal Park. Area residents, particularly dog owners, felt that increasing visibility in the park in the evenings, especially in the winter, would make them feel safer and more inclined to use the park. We conducted a survey of Emeryville park users, and we were able to get a sense of what people like about our parks and what they would like to see more of. Bathrooms and more dog areas being high on the list of what people would like to see more of. We provided input on the park space to the Sherwin-Williams Development as well, holding several discussions with the developer about what would be best for that area. And we also held a community meeting, which I thought was a great success, at the Watergate Complex to discuss the residents' desire for developing Davenport Park for small children, and that project has since been funded by you, and its plans are moving forward. And we feel this particular park is... Really shows... Will show what you get when you have direct community participation. They really said what they need, and we're going to have it, and that's great. And one of our new members comes from the group that organized that, so that's also nice, too. We covered a fair amount of ground, and... Oh, we also expressed our desire to prioritize installing riprap on the park at Point Emory since that land is eroding, and I remind people that the longer this need goes unaddressed, the less of Point Emory there will be for us to protect and enjoy. We covered a fair amount of ground, and to facilitate doing that, we increased the frequency of our meetings from bimonthly to monthly, and that's been a big help. For the next year, we will continue to look at the CIP projects and advise the City Council as to which projects we think should get the highest priority. And we would like to evaluate Emeryville's Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan to accommodate changes... I think we've got a little bit of that, yeah. To accommodate changes that have occurred since it was adopted in January of 2011. So, it's been a while, and it seems to be a good time to readdress that. We would like to find out more about how Emeryville workers use our park spaces since the focus thus far has been mostly on residential use, and we feel our parks will be best and best used if they address both the needs of residents and daytime worker population. We're considering advising the Community Services Department about programs that are offered in our park system when we can see ways to improve those programs. That's just a general discussion. And finally, but not least, we hope to look into ways to expand our park service... Our spark space that we already have, especially as Emeryville's population grows, and will continue to do so with some of the large-scale developments that we have coming up in our city. We would like to ensure that we have a suitable amount of well-designed parks for that population, and as part of that concern, we hope to look into what funding mechanisms might be available for this as well. And that's what we did and what we will plan to do. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any public comment? All right, seeing none. Any questions or discussion?
I just want to say that this is the soul of livability of our city, this committee, and your members really are actively working on making sure that we get to use our parks and we also fund future parks, and I just think that it's an important committee for our future.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, I think public spaces make a committee... Can make a community, so it's important to do that and do it well.
Any other comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that wraps up this session, so let's adjourn the special meeting at 6:09. Yeah, six.
Councilmember Bowers?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez? Vice Mayor Pats?
Still here.
And Mayor Medina?
Here. All right, can I get approval of the final agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Member Pats, seconded by Member Bowers, sorry, Vice Mayor Pats, and seconded by Member Bowers.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pats?
Aye.
And Mayor Medina?
Aye. Any expertise communications? Got a lot of voicemails about this from author of the Tadler blog, so if that counts as an expertise, many. Any others?
I won't say anything about that.
All right, any public comment for the consent agenda or items not on the agenda? Seen none. Let's kick off this study session. Who we got?
Mayor Medina, members of the city council. This is gonna be kind of a tag-team effort here, a joint presentation. I will begin with the kind of policy basis and the little bit of history on the parks and open space issue in Emeryville, and talk a little bit then about the development impact fee that we have related to parks and recreation. Then I'll hand it off to Pedro, who will talk about the parks that we have built since the general plan and strategic plan were adopted, and the parks that we're planning to build in the future. And then Andrew is also here to respond to any questions you may have. So we have basically two guiding documents that are the basis for the city's policies about parks and recreation and open spaces. They are, of course, the general plan, which was adopted in 2009, and the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, which was adopted in 2011. The general plan describes the policy, goals, policies, and implementation actions regarding future development of parks and open space. And the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan establishes a course of action to create a sustainable and interconnected system of parks, recreational facilities, programs and services that promote recreation, health, and environmental conservation as integral elements of the community. That all sounds great. What does that really mean? So this is the park, open space, and public services map from the park and open space element of the general plan. I would direct your attention to several things that are shown here in the legend. First is the idea, well, there's a number of existing parks that are shown on here, and those are reflected in the strategic plan as well. When we were developing the general plan, we went through a bunch of different options with the community and the council and commission and everybody else, of course. And concerning parks and open space, we had two basic options. One was to create a few large parks throughout the city, you know, two or three in strategic locations. And the other was to create a lot of little parks all over the place. Well, needless to say, the community said, "We want both." And the commission and council said, "We want both." And so we ended up with both. So this is a, you know, an amalgamation of both of those options. So we've got the big parks. Got one up here in the North Hollis area, which is basically an extension of Doyle Hollis Park for two blocks to the north of that. We've got the PG&E site over here. The AC Transit site is also designated as a possible park opportunity, depending on what happens with that site. And then, of course, there's also the Horton Landing and the Sherwin-Williams site, which is a substantial amount of area that's zoned for open space. And then the little green circles are the other park opportunities that represent small parks that would, or plazas or whatever, that would be located all over the city in strategic locations as the opportunities arose. A few other things that are shown on this map are the Greenway. We actually have two Greenways designated in Emeryville, what's referred to as the Emeryville Greenway, which basically is north to south. It's just about completed now, and with Horton Landing Park and the Sherwin-Williams project, it will be completed. The other one is the East-West Greenway, which really has not been implemented at all. I suppose you could call the sidewalk along 53rd Street next to ECL is perhaps the first piece of that, but that's really just a sidewalk with some blue swirls, I think, on it. Anyway, that was intended to go along the route of Temescal Creek from the Adeline Street across the city, 53rd Street over here to the edge of the bay at Chelmont Street. I think those are the main features of this map. Oh, there's also what we call green streets that are intended to connect the various parks, which simply, basically, just means they have nice wide sidewalks with nice street trees. Then we have the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. And what this does is it takes the general plan, policies and map and so forth, and it takes it all one step further. It fleshes everything out a little bit more. So there's two key maps in the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan. This is the existing park system, which basically just shows what we have now, as of 2011. We have a little bit more now than we did then. And then this is the concept map that shows what we would have in the future under the general plan. So the big parks are numbered here, one, two, three, and the little circles are lettered, A through whatever, L, I guess. And this plan has a separate page on each of those parks. It has a little description. It says what each park should be. In the back of the plan, there are cost estimates for how much each of these parks would, you know, be expected to cost. That was in $20,011, obviously. I believe Pedro passed that out, the matrix that shows all of these different parks and what they would be expected to cost and what kind of features they would have. And this also shows the two Greenways, the North-South Greenway here and the East-West Greenway here. The general plan also has some acreage standards for parks. These are intended to be citywide standards to be met over a period of 20 years, which is the time horizon for the general plan. They do not apply to each and every development project. I think there may be some confusion about that. The intent of these standards, when the general plan was adopted, was to serve as a yardstick for the general plan itself, to say, "Does the general plan provide for sufficient park space to meet this standard?" Kind of like the way the housing element has to provide for enough land that's zoned to meet your regional housing needs allocation. Doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna produce all those housing units, although it would be great if we could. Similarly, these standards were intended as a yardstick for the general plan to say, "Does it provide for parks to meet these standards?", not to say that every single development project has to provide this amount of park space. So the standards are, develop three acres of parkland per thousand new residents, develop a quarter acre of parkland per thousand new residents, and locate at least one park within a five-minute walk of all residences. The impact fee, the way that the individual development projects pay for their park and recreation obligations is through the development impact fee that the city council has adopted. This was done based on a fairly complicated NEXUS study that we contracted to have prepared, which is required by the State Mitigation Fee Act. This fee was adopted by the council in July of 2014, and it applies to all new developments and changes of use in the city. It's charged when a building permit is issued. As I said, it was based on a NEXUS study that was prepared by Willdan Financial Services. And it funds capital improvement projects from the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. This is just an example of some of the impact fees. We actually have three development impact fees. In addition to parks and recreation, we have transportation and affordable housing. And this little matrix here shows what the current fees are for multifamily residential rental, multifamily ownership, townhomes, offices, research and development, retail and restaurant mix, and hotels. So these are just examples of, this is per unit for the residential and per square foot for the other uses. So all of these uses have to pay this fee at permit issuance. Since the fee was adopted, it's generated about $1.3 million for projects. It's been used for the Stanford Avenue Park expansion, for the Horton Landing Park expansion, for the South Bayfront, Ped Bike Bridge, and the Emeryville Greenway-Stanford DePaul project. And I think indicative of how we have been using the money to build parks, the current fund balance is only about $72,000, because we've spent the money that we've collected. And with that, I will turn it over to Pedro to talk about what we've built and what we're planning to build.
Charlie, good evening. As you can see, there's been several parks that either have been built or renovated since 2009. Those include the ECL field, pool, blacktop areas for basketball and other uses. Christie's Park was expanded and now also includes a dog park. The skate park was added, which used to be the Pixar pedestrian area, changed to Joseph Emery Skate Park, bike trail. And then we expanded on Stanford Avenue Park. There's been renovation and Park on Powell, and now includes a dog park. Doyle Hollis was also completed after the general plan was done, and the Greenway on Pellwood Park and Temescal Park has been renovated, now a highly-used park, and also includes a dog park. Parks that have been approved to be built is the Sherman Williams Project, Davenport Park, as mentioned earlier, and then the Horton Landing Park. We hand it out to the council, will answer questions, but I just wanted to make clear that in your handout, you have the capital cost model assumptions and capital and operations cost model that you can reference what is being planned and what it would cost to actually put this into place. And there is some probably, those are, as mentioned earlier, 2011 costs, so I'm sure there's some changes to those, but at least it gives an idea of what it would cost. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Any clarifying questions?
I have one. So the ECL field is not included on our totals of how much park space we have? Is that in there?
I'm not sure.
I saw it under additional sites, as joint school district slash city facility, and then just a dash in the acreage.
Yeah, probably. Right, it wasn't included in this, so that's something we need to update on the totals.
And do you happen to know the acreage of that?
You know, I don't know it off the top of my head. I did work on it the other day, trying to figure out what it was.
John, how big is a field?
How big is a football field?
Yeah.
Yeah.
125.
Yeah, yeah, a football field is a...
120 by 50.
How many acres is that?
Two. Two.
So we've got a couple more acres in here. Okay. I just saw that as something that I thought we had.
That's, I mean, I think of a park as being open to the public. Is that park open to the public?
Yes, we, the field, the track, and the, all the commons area, they're all open to the public.
They're rentable?
After hours.
Half their hours, they're just open?
They're open, yeah. We, even before school, the people come out and walk on the track, it's open to the community, and then after hours, and...
Cool. Just to follow up, that's separate from people using the rec center where they require a membership? Like, if I was to go and use the gym or the pool, I have to pay, as a resident, a resident fee for a four-month or a three-month period of time to use it? But you're saying that the fields, there's no fee, anyone can walk and use them?
You rent out the field, but you can also go out and walk the track without any fee.
Without any fee, okay.
You can jot it.
If there's not a rental going on, that would be a safety issue, then you can use the field.
Okay.
All right. So to clarify, to our subtotal of existing parks, we're adding two-ish acres, probably? Okay.
Yes, I would say that would be an estimate.
Thanks. All right. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seems may, no? Okay, let's jump into discussion, then. I'm happy to kick us off since I asked for this item.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think I ran for office a couple of years ago, and I think that I heard from residents over and over again were housing affordability, transportation, and livability, parks and open space. I think as a council, we've done a really phenomenal job of prioritizing housing and transportation issues, and those have been really big lifts we've taken the last couple of years. But I think we could do a little bit of a better job addressing, as we increase our density, some of this livability and park space for our ever-increasing residential population. And I thought, before we get into our budget cycle in a couple of months, I want to take some time to look at what parks we have built and what parks are on the roster, and see if we could prioritize adding some park space to Emeryville, because it is a thing that I hear from residents pretty often. It is a thing that makes our community, to mention what we'd heard from our Parks and Rec, our Parks Committee earlier, it does make our city livable and special. And so, you know, I kind of wanted to just put this up so we could get a good holistic look at what we have and what we are aiming to have. I think our plan, our general plan, is quite ambitious in terms of the amount of park space. We'd have to take two blocks north of Hollis Park and the entire PG&E area. But I do think there's some doable things we could probably knock out if we made this a priority for us, not that our city isn't trying to do a lot already. So I'm curious to hear from you, if there's any things that you see in this that we think we could prioritize for the upcoming couple of years.
Mayor Medina, would you like me to put the map back up?
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor Pats?
Before I talk new parks, can we get an estimate on when the bathroom will be at Temescal Creek Park?
Thank you for asking.
Great question.
That's, you know, I was just there, I don't even know what day of the week it is, it's Tuesday, so I was just there two days ago. And I just, you know, we put the lights in, but we've been asking for a bathroom, the community's been asking for a bathroom, and want to say we funded the bathroom.
We did.
Yeah, so I kind of want my bathroom.
I think the issue was the, where to connect it. There was a plumbing issue, right, Andrew?
There's a number of issues with that. It's gonna be fairly expensive with the plumbing, although it could happen. It's gonna be, we're either gonna have to pump it out, the long-term maintenance costs will be significant, and do you want it in the interior of the park, where we had some problems whether it's gonna be locked, or out along the edge of the park? So this is one of the projects that's in the CIP, and we wanted to have some discussions about that, and also with the Parks and Rec Committee, much like the lighting that a number of years ago, I understood people did not want the lighting in there, and we took the lighting out. Now people want the lighting, so we want to have the discussion. Right now, we're, there is funding to be able to put a bathroom in there, but we need to be certain that this is what the community wants in that area. And I hear you very clearly, Mr. Pats, I know you want the bathroom. But that's, we want to have that discussion, we can come back.
Just to, just for Mr. Pats', I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Pats's benefit, at Budget Governance Committee, we agreed as a timetable that the CIP would be on May 7th, is that right? Okay, so his ability to ask all the questions in details about that, because I agree, I share his interest in this, so I just want to make sure we're bringing this full thing forward to him on that item on May 7th.
And, and, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, can you explain or expand onto me what you mean by bringing that forward? Because I, to me, I feel like, so go ahead, let's start with that question, when you say that.
Just mean like the logistics of all, all the details?
So, a couple of options, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, like, all the challenges Andrew's talking about is gonna be presented at one time, I think. Is that right?
That's correct. If you want to have the questions about that and the discussion on it, and what, what are the concerns and what does the community have? Because we've, we've, I've, you know, in my discussions at the Parks Committee and discussions with staff and discussions with others, I hear a strong desire to have a bathroom. I also have heard a lot of concerns about a bathroom. Is that bathroom gonna be open? Is it gonna be locked at night, you know, et cetera? So we can build one, there are problems with it as far as the drainage and how we can get there, what it will cost to do it, what it will cost to maintain. If that's ultimately the decision and that's where we go, then we can plan it and schedule it in.
I'm happy to walk the site with you beforehand, if you want some thoughts on it.
Certainly.
That's all I think about when I'm there now.
Madam Mayor, if I could also just interject, the Parks Commission, Parks Committee will be also hearing a presentation on the CIP at its meeting tomorrow night. So there will be a mention of this and hopefully a discussion of this project at that committee meeting as well.
That's exactly the intent of going there tomorrow.
Great. And then, Member Donahue, can liaise back when we do the CIP?
I'm sorry to report that I'll be gone tomorrow and unable to attend that meeting.
Oh, that's too bad. Well...
Maybe someone else could replace me.
Is that allowed? I don't think that's allowed.
There's not someone who can replace him, but can somebody attend as a member of the public to listen?
Yes, a member can attend as a member of the public to listen. They would not be, they're in that role as a member of the public and not as a council liaison.
I don't know if you're available, Vice Mayor Pats, but I would like to recommend that you go if you can.
I can one-up that at the end, it's the reason I cannot go. There's a member of the school board who will be attending as...
It's biz nexus, where's Chad? All right. So I note the concern about that park, and, you know, this came up, I think, two and a half years ago when I was on the Parks Committee as well, that we've been talking about the bathroom for a while. And, great. Are there any other, I mean, I'm looking at this list of proposed parks, and one that jumps out to me that I'd like to kind of put a focus on is .25 acres in the Ashby Interchange, since I know there currently is a project in the works to update that space. And I think as a council, I'd like to push for, we were given several different drafts of like what that might look like, the Ashby Interchange, and some of them had park space and some did not, and I'd like to really push to get some park space there if we can.
Yeah, so we sit on the Transportation and Public Works Committee together, and staff provided us a overview, so for the benefit of council, we've all seen the image of the Ashby redo that has all the rotaries. That is being scrapped, just as, at a high level, make it easy for you, that proposal is being scrapped, the project is going through, but they would like to do a more efficient design, and there is a recommendation that the, our committee, along with the staff, recommended a tight diamond, or strict diamond, I think it was called.
There are many diamond options.
There were several diamond options, but it's a diamond approach, and what that does is it, we reviewed potential pathways for a bike bridge to go across alongside the bridge, and then depending on what side of the freeway, or, I'm sorry, of Ashby that that was on, there was the potential for a, like a vista point with a park, and if it was on the Emeryville side of Ashby, it would be an Emeryville Park. And so I think that's, that's what we're, it sounds like you're referring to as making a priority, so it sounds like we're looking to get council support on a design that would allow for us to have a park.
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Medina, can I elaborate on that just a bit? So the, let me go over here.
It's the green dot up there.
It is, the green dot. You have adopted this. This green dot right here is that park there, or Vista Point, or whatever, that Council Member Bouders is referring to, and it's also shown here. It's A, and in the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan, it has more elaboration on it, of course, like the plan does for everything that's in the general plan. The thinking when this was adopted was that, if you look at an aerial photograph and you look at the Ashby Interchange, you see all this grass, all this open space area that's bigger than virtually any park in the city. So, I mean, Emeryville's a small city, we don't have a lot of parks, and here's this big chunk of open land that's just sitting there unused. So the idea was to put something there, and the city council has adopted it. We have been told that Caltrans won't allow city parks in the middle of interchanges, so that could be a problem. So the idea was to couch it as a, as Council Member Bouders said, a Vista Point, or a rest stop, or something like that, along the Ped Bike Route. And they do have similar things like that in Caltrans right of way at the Zampa Bridge that goes over to Vallejo?
Vallejo.
The north end, there's a Vista Point that is only accessible from the Ped Bike Path. And also, there is a similar thing right in the middle of the 780, 680 interchange at the north end of the Venetia Carquinas Bridge. That particular Vista Point is accessible by car, but it's also accessible by peds and bikes from the bike path that goes over that bridge, and that's right in the middle of the Caltrans interchange. So I think there's precedent for that. I don't believe Caltrans would allow us to consider it a city park, but, you know, who cares what it's called, as long as we get the open space feature at that location.
Okay. Yes, member Donahue?
Well, as, an aside, I've been to that Vallejo Vista Point, it is spectacular as a bicyclist. So I could imagine we could have a great design at the Ashby site for a Vista Point. I just wanted to say that it would be great if this council would have a goal of having our one-time income funds, say, from real estate transfer tax, saving up to somehow let us afford a space for one of these larger parks as a goal, that if we were to somehow accumulate funds, that we could potentially make one of these happen in the not-too-distant future. And it looks like, given that our property tax is going to start to happen for our city because redevelopments ending and bonds being paid off, we might have enough income in the future. This is kind of a question for the Finance Committee about, is that a realistic goal to think about us being able to save up for one of these parks, using those two sources of future funds?
I would just say, it's a great suggestion, and I think, you know, the policy that the Budget Committee adopted this past year, we are over projected revenue for one-time commercial transfer tax, as you noted, and the policy, we said, it used to be that everything just went into, went into the Capital Improvement Plan, and we now put the budgeted $2 million into the plan, and then everything in excess of the $2 million threshold is divided, 50% goes to pay down unfunded liabilities to keep us on track with our CalPERS situation, and 50% is available to the council to assign or distribute as necessary. So that's, that's a totally viable use of the funds, to your point, and the, the property tax increment revenue that we get from the Boomerang Funds, as we call it, which is the old redevelopment property tax, 25% we get back, we're using it to pay down debts, and we have a horizon line where the debt threshold falls off in about six to seven years, and the city will receive more property tax revenue back in about a seven-year horizon. And so that is a potential future use of that money as well, if the council wanted to consider that. Yeah.
If I may comment on that?
You may.
I think last year, we talked about, right about this time, we were talking about a potential park bond measure, and I think if you have an actual project in mind, that is a, another way to finance the acquisition of some of this land. I think the problem we have right now is there's people on this land, and so, to me, that's the bigger challenge than paying for it.
Yes, especially the Doyle Hollis one. Can, of all, can you go back to the slide, please, where it's got the letters on it instead of this one? That's a lot easier for me to read. And can you maybe point out a couple of these that don't have people on them currently?
Well, this one's got a bunch of buses on it.
Under Citizens United, they're people, too.
Yeah. Right. And this one has a bunch of Transformers on it. There are some people there, PG&E employees. This one, of course, has lots of people and businesses and stuff. The little green circles are...
Sorry, Charlie, just a second.
I'm curious, which, what, where is J? Is that literally the little parklet across the street? What is J proposing to be?
Ah, what is J?
It is the Park Avenue, west of Hollis.
Hollis, which, we're west of Hollis, but it's at Park, which is City Hall.
Roof?
What is it? Read the description again?
On the, site J says Park Avenue, west of Hollis, and on the map there, it's literally where City Hall is.
It might be that space back there. I'm not sure.
Oh, wait, no, Diana's got the answer.
Oh.
Come on down.
All right.
She knows what we don't know.
This is her baby, so she, she knows.
When the Park Avenue District was, the committee was developing the Park Avenue District Plan, there's a tilt-up that is economically viable, but the people don't like it very much, they'd like it to go away and become a whole bunch of things, including a park. That's where that came from.
Okay, where is this?
Some of that walls that are held up by their, their roof.
Are we talking about the little tiny parking lot between...
No, it's where Interior Motions is, and...
We're talking about the massive building that is between Horton and Hubbard, and between Park and Sherwin.
Yeah.
It occupies an entire block. And those kind of buildings are called tilt-ups because that's how they're built.
Why does the map say at Hollis, then?
Well, the map, the description may be wrong, but if you look at here, City Center's over here.
Oh, I see.
City Hall's over here. This is Horton.
Yeah, I know, that's the building that has the office supply and the badminton in it.
Right.
Yes, badminton's in there. And we're not supposed to put these circles on a specific property and say it has to be there. So that's why it's kind of trying to be there.
I see what you're saying.
Well, and also, it wasn't clear if that site would become available, but the Park Ave Plan did have a, you know, a provision for some kind of park along Park Avenue, west of Hollis Street.
Got a question for member Martinez?
Well, now we've got Diana up here. Can you explain L? This, this is just a block with homes on it, so what...
L is, means there should be a park in the triangle neighborhood.
But not, not, we weren't thinking of any specific properties that were becoming available to redevelop.
Right. And actually, putting in the mini-park was kind of working towards that, and also ascertaining joint use of the German School Field. But we still would like to have a park somewhere around in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
If you look at this map, K is in a place where our population density is skyrocketing proportional to how it used to be.
The parking lot of East Bay Bridge Shopping Center?
Well, no, all the new housing we're building there, that's coming there, the, this is a area of relative high, soon-to-be-realized pedestrian density combined with residential density, and I just think that is a place that is going to sorely need some kind of small park.
You know, I agree with you, and I don't love enormous parking lots, but I do think we are in a JPA with, for that particular site.
The general plan, it's not actually in the Parks and Rec section of the general plan, but the general plan has policies about the reuse of these big parking lots, both these Bay Bridge and Powell Street Plaza, and the vision is that they will develop more like the way the marketplace has, so get rid of all the parking lots and replace them with higher-density, structured parking and buildings and stuff, including parks. And so I think that K was intended to represent some kind of a park feature when the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center redevelops, more similar to the way the public market is.
Oh, okay. That's great context, thank you. All right. All right. I think, you know, we've got a lot of parks that are dots on here that are not correlated with space, and the tricky part is finding space in 1.2 square miles. But what I heard from you, and what I kind of agree with, is that as the Budget Advisory Committee sort of looks at our upcoming budget, I would like to see a priority on maybe allocating some funds towards park space. That's something that I would like to make an ask of as a city council, and I don't know if there's some agreement over here, but it's something that I think our citizens have asked for, and we need, as we increase density, to prioritize it.
I'm happy to second that thought with only one caveat. At no point do we add the word "let" to the end of "park," and we do actual "parks."
Oh, you don't like parklets?
I do not like parklets.
First of all, you're a grunch.
I am.
Parklets...
I don't want to chew on my lawn either.
Do you not enjoy brunch? Because having brunch outside in a parklet is one of the key pleasures of life. And I, I just, I'm not saying we should build parklets instead of parks, but I do think parklets are enjoyable, and I don't want to remove them from possibilities. They enhance open public space.
It's a workaround that, to me, takes away from the idea of creating actual park space. We build it, you need amount of space for it to be a park. Parklets are wonderful. I watched a great presentation on, you can just do them with some chalk paint and other things, you don't actually need even city approval. It was at the Planning Commissioners Academy. I think Charlie would have been shocked at what they did to turn parklets in with hay bales and paint, but to me, I think, if we're going to talk parks, and we're going to spend money on parks, I want some actual grass and/or trees. Technically, I want a sports field, but I know that is purely fantasy at this point, so I don't want to shrink too small down that we're able to put in a single parking space and try to call that a park.
Okay, I get you on prioritizing parks over smaller things, but, you know, I'm not going to rule out going for a parklet if we can get one in by removing a parking space somewhere, just not as our primary goal with this. Member Donahue?
I agree about parklets being of value, but I also recognize that, yeah, we're not going to put a Band-Aid on our problem. I think we have to do what you're suggesting, put aside some money, and recognize that going forward, we're going to have to spend some of it on parks.
Budget Subcommittee over here?
So Mayor, I want to thank you for bringing this item forward. I think it's, it's easy to get wrapped up in all of the other business that we have to do and lose sight of open spaces in this city, and, and we have so very little land to work with that every inch of it is valuable, and, which is why I'm in favor of parklets as well. Not at the expense of bigger, developed parks, but in addition to bigger, developed parks, and I think what we'll find when we, you know, have results on, on studies of the best, highest use of curbs, we're finding out that it's not parking.
It's brunch.
It's brunch. It's brunch and other recreational activities that you could do curbside. So I, as a member of the Budget and Governance Committee, am happy to consider parks as a priority as we enter this new budget season, and I just think we, we have to keep thinking about parks and really chip away at this, at the, the goals in our general plan, because we, wherever we can get an inch, we need to, to jump on those opportunities and think strategically about how we're going to make this come true, which is, it is very, there's a lot on this map that I'm looking at. A lot of opportunity in the future, but as it's been stated, there are a lot of businesses and people in, on these bigger locations at the moment, but we can and should plan for the future.
You can count me in the Breakfast Club, and I, I support your request, and I, I've taken a few notes here based on what I've heard you and others say, and the process for firming up the city's baseline budget, the Capital Improvement Plan, and the, the five-year trajectory for where we want to go will take shape in the next two, two months or so. And so I know that Councilmember Martinez and I will work very closely together on ensuring that what we've heard here today gets incorporated into that, so that we have a plan that matches your vision for parks, and I want to thank you for leading on that. Just as a small anecdote, I'm preparing to give a nerd night presentation next week on the history of Emeryville, and one of the things I encountered with the help of Mr. Bryant in reading over 120 old newspaper articles about our city, the city's first park came 81 years after the city was founded. The city had no parks for 81 years, and in 1977, the city approved a 6,200-square-foot lot, which is now today known as the Doyle Street Mini-Park as its first city park, after the Emeryville Neighborhood Improvement Association got involved and fought the owner of the abandoned property and got city to buy the property and turn it basically into a grass lot that had a top playground on it. So some people will point to the number of acres we have as parkland and say it's dismal and disappointing, and I would just remind those naysayers that for 81 years, we had zero. So we've come a long way in the 40 years we've been doing this, and I just appreciate you keeping that mantle.
Thank you. I would like to take, if council agrees, I would like to prioritize focusing on the Ashby Interchange as a potential park space, and also our Emeryville Greenway expansions at Transportation and Public Works. John and I have focused a lot on where we connect through to our surrounding cities, and I think, you know, those are great places, and they kind of match up very well, actually, with what's on this map, to enhance green space along those corridors. Council's aco, that I'd like to prioritize at Transportation and Public Works.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 6:54. We took a couple of comments after Charlie, and no one came up. All right, we're adjourned.